Yep, their last name out of here.
Yeah, it didn't matter. Everybody knew what you were talking about.
Yeah, well, that was me that, you know, I'm the one that taped it, left it out. Yeah, but that's what I mean. It's some of that is just updating. What I need to do is where I've changed it, I need.
Here's, I can tell the NEFs were not using the up-to-date. Making up their own or article sections.
Yeah, well, suppose, yeah, they started on and.
Those, those, those codes for, those particular articles were updated in 2020.
Yes, they were.
That's what they shouldn't use.
Yeah, I know. But I don't know that anyone pointed that out to them.
Not my problem.
I'm not saying it is. No, no, I'm just saying, I know what they would.
It is seven thirty when you are.
Yes, seven thirty, we will call the regular meeting of the Harlem Township Zoning Commission to order. And if you will call the role, Ms. Ruba.
Ben Kavler.
Here.
Joni Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hoprock. Louie Greenwell.
Here.
And Alan Zaco.
Here.
Thank you. And let me quickly introduce other officials who are present. This is Ashley Zaruba. Is our zoning assistant, Mr. Mike Cannon, our zoning director of zoning is back here. And we have Mr. John Trader here tonight, one of our trustees. So John came in before we started our meeting and indicated he has an, some information that he would like to share with us. And I think that we'll go ahead and have you do that, John, here at the beginning, because we have a hearing scheduled at seven forty-five.
Perfect, thank you. All right, in the interest of ongoing transparency and proactive comms, I wanted to give the zoning commission an update on a meeting that we had with the city of Columbus this last week. If you recall, this is our third meeting with Columbus. This meeting follows the decision by Columbus to annex nine hundred and eighty acres of London Township, which included the southern end of Hoover Reservoir up to the middle of Smothers Road. That has implications for us because it basically makes it very difficult for Westerville to annex across the western, the Hoover Reservoir. Right before meeting with us, this was up in Delaware County. The state of Columbus did meet with trustees from Genoa Township. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss the completion of the annexation of the reservoir. The reason they're doing this is to protect their water supply. This is, this is really the impetus. Tubane issues in central Ohio are power generation and water. And Columbus wanted to be proactive here to protect that resource. They did inform us that when that annexation occurs, there is one plot that is mainly in Genoa Township, but has a section that comes over into Harlem that will be, that will be annexed. And in any agreement that Harlem signs with the city of Columbus, that plot will be noted so that we, we all identify what that is. In our meeting with Columbus, we met with officials from Delaware, Tracy Davies, Chris Bowserman, who really remained silent for the meeting. And then representatives from Columbus, the deputy director of development, they had a water person there, a sewer person there, a couple planners. And really, it was, it was an ongoing dialogue between that team. And then we had myself, Holly Maddie from Crossroads, Pete Griggs, our attorney, and Amy Clark, who is a member of the steering committee in strategic planning right now. It's a very healthy dialogue back and forth. We discussed four or five areas. One being the growth corridor. Columbus desires not only to protect their water resource, but also to protect the ability to extend into Licking County should in the future they ever desire to do so. They do intend on annexing the Rocky Fork Metro Park in the near future. I think that probably means within four or five years. That begins to get them across to Licking County. At some point, they'll want to extend that. That could require coming up into Harlem Township to finish that, that length, that run. We discussed the property that we basically call Mount Harlem. And probably this agreement, should it ever be signed, would entail the option for Columbus to annex that property in the future so that they would have the ability to reach Licking County. That annexation could include something, say, for example, in the next ten years that property develops commercially, it requires a retention pond, and it could be designed such that that is the retention pond. The deputy director indicated this is purely optional. He doesn't expect honestly that it would occur in his lifetime or perhaps at all. Columbus is just at a point where they want to see their options open. And so if we, if we had an agreement, again, that property would be laid out as a potential option for Columbus annexation. The agreement then would entail that Columbus has no desire to annex any other portion of Harlem Township. And typically, these deals last for ten years with five-year reupments. I said to Pete, hey, why don't we make this one for fifty? And so we'll see if in our dialogue, how that unfolds. We had a conversation about sewer. Really, the, the talk about sewer will involve Delaware and in the city of Columbus. Of course, our desire is that the trunk that's going to be completed in July of twenty-six serviced the entire township. There were no promises made in that regard. I think there is an openness to discussion about that possibility. We had a conversation about a joint economic development district, the opportunity to share income tax with new development so that new development pays for itself. Again, the details of that conversation and of that kind of an agreement will be worked out over time. Columbus did put the ball squarely in our court and asked us to finish an economic development plan. And really, we need those kinds of facts and figures to move forward with what we might ask for in a JED. And what's very important here is that Columbus said to us, you tell us what you want, which was good to hear. We discussed a, we discussed housing in the township. Columbus is concerned about the, the pressure they feel for housing internally. They refer to housing at every price point or kind of entry level kind of housing. I think that as they look at the township's zoning and overlays, they see a congruency between our strategic plan and their desires. And they absolutely reaffirmed the direction that we are headed in regard to a premier rural residential township and see themselves aligning with our strategic goals, particularly those of autonomy and in residential planning. Again, that's something that will be worked out in conversation. I talked to Pete Griggs after this discussion and asked him what he thought. And his, his line was, if you'd asked me six months ago, if the city of Columbus would ever sit down with a township and discuss an agreement like this, I would have been all in on no way. And so I think we're beneficiaries of a very unique moment in time where Westerville has been kind of cut off from annexation. New Albany has no interest in annexation because they don't want to impact their schools and they're focused on the sixty-two corridor. And Columbus is, is unwilling to annex. They, they don't have an appetite because they're focused inward and they're willing to sign an agreement that says will not annex further or provide services into southeast Delaware County. These talks will be ongoing. This is the third of several conversations that will take place. It's going to take us some time to do our economic plan. Dana McDaniel is working on that now, what the scope of work is and who are the participants. I would hope that by the end of the summer or beginning of fall, we have that completed and we're able to go back to Columbus and say, look, here's, we've wedded our economic plan to our strategic plan, our overlays, our zoning, and here's kind of where we think we are, and here's our ask. And that should help us go forward with discussion. I do have a meeting a week from today with Big Walnut School Superintendent and their treasurer to see what kind of strategic planning they're doing as they think about growth across their district. And if they really have a hard knowledge of what's happening in Harlem Township and what it might look like over the next ten or twenty years. And so that's, that's where we are today and wanted to, to give you that update, that information. Do you have any questions at this point in time?
Only regarding the timeline when you're going to have another meeting with Columbus, it sounded like from what you were saying early on, that that won't be until after we have completed the work on a strategic plan. Not strategic plan, economic plan.
That's correct. Yep, ball's in our court in that regard. So there's a impetus for us to get to work on that. At the same time, there's no need for us to feel undue pressure to hurry this. I think with what's happening in intel, the economy overall, I, I think that there's time and that what we do, we can do well. And, and so we should.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything else?
Question. If Columbus annexes the Rocky Fork Metro Park, does that remain a metro park?
Yes. Yep, it does. Yep, they're committed to that. Yep. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay. We have four more minutes until we get to the time for the start of the hearing, which is scheduled at seven forty-five. And at this point, I don't know if we've got the meeting minutes. Sometimes we can do these very quickly because we've had them and we've reviewed them. At this point, I guess I will say to the commission members, anybody have any further comments or suggestions for changes in the wording? Because you had submitted those to Ashley and the document, the hard copy we have reflects any suggested changes.
I see a question about the gas stations.
Gas stations.
Not being allowed anywhere? I would think you're going to have auto repair services, including oil refill stations. You really got to have gas stations too. I think that firstly, I think gas stations may be one of the things that our residents would use more often than a lot of these other things that we've got listed here.
Oh, is that a change in the minutes or is that something that we'll be discussing when we meet?
That was in the minutes.
About gas stations?
Page three.
Joni, that's, that's why I put in the note, is this right? After, but excluding gas stations, because I wasn't sure that that after reflected.
I did not have that in my notes that we had decided on that.
I don't remember.
I think I recall Scott saying he was going to go back and, and update that language and, and either, either exclude or include explicitly. But as far as the minutes go, I don't, I don't think there was a, a specific decision that it would be one way or the other.
Then maybe we should just add this, including oil ref, refill stations, but which or which may or may not
Include gas stations.
Exclude gas stations.
Include or exclude?
May or may not.
All right. That change in wording then, that would get at what you're questioning, huh, Joni?
Yeah.
All right.
And then we take out what I have in brackets and gaps.
That, that's just a comment, so that's not part of the minutes. Okay, auto repair services, including oil refill stations, which may exclude, may or may not exclude gas stations. Got that change? All right, thank you, Ashley. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Do you have a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Louis, seconded by Brittany to approve the minutes for the special zoning commission meeting on March twenty-four, as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none and all in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
And if it's no, indicate a no. All ayes, the motion carried, minutes are approved as amended for March twenty-four. That's good. We were able to do it, and it's now seven forty-five. So we will recess the regular meeting at this point and move forward with opening the hearing on HTCC twenty-five oh four for Derek and Lorena Neff, the property owners. So, Ms. Ruba, would you call the role for the hearing, please? Zoning Commission. Here.
Joni Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hoprock.
Here.
Louie Greenwell.
Here.
Alan Zaco.
Here.
All right, thank you. Let me just briefly go over the expectations in terms of how the hearing is to be conducted, the purpose and rules and procedures. Commission, as we move into the discussion of the hearing, we have the application. There will be specific questions that we will address by commission members. Commission members will comment and are asking any initial questions. At this time, there will be no public participation. However, when this is finished, we will open it up for public comment and our questions. And at that time, I would ask that if any member of the public who is present, or if there are members participating online, and I see some names up there. The same rule will apply to both, except that for those persons present in the room, we would ask that you step up to the podium so that you would be near the microphone and that will pick up the information because our meetings are recorded. When we do open it to public, there will be the opportunity for public comment and ask questions. Throughout the process, only one person may speak at a time. At that, when you come to the podium, please be sure to state your name and address so that it can be recorded. Please be brief and be factual. Please do not bring up points and or questions that have been previously addressed. Remember, only one person can be heard at a time, so please do not speak over others and do not interrupt the speaker. Do not carry on your own conversations while a person is speaking. If there is a group that wishes to be heard, please have a spokesperson for that group to step forward. When there are no further questions or comments from the public, the public portion of the hearing will be closed. At that point, no further public comments and our questions will be entertained. But commission members will then have the opportunity to make any additional comments or ask any additional questions. So at this point, I'm going to ask Ms. Ruba or assistant to the zoning commission to please read the publication notice for the hearing tonight. Was advertised in the Delaware Gazette and it has been posted online.
Notice, Harlem Township Zoning Commission are being asked to consider the following. Derek Neff and Lorena Neff at one, one-two-one-one-six Center Village Road, Westerville, Ohio, four-three-zero-eight-two are seeking to rezone five-point-one-three acres from AR one to PCD, personal number three-one-six-three-one-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-four-zero-zero-zero. Hearing will be held on April seventh, twenty-twenty-five at seven forty-five PM at the Harlem Township Building, three-eight-eight-three South State Route six-oh-five, Galena, Ohio, four-three-zero-two-one. To view the application and the accompanying documents, visit the website online at harlemtpp.com. The hearing is open to the public. The hearing will also be available currently on Zoom. Mike Kavler, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Ruba. Has the application, Ms. Ruba, been submitted on the correct form? Did the applicant or agent sign the request for the hearing? I see the signature from Mr. Neff.
Since Lorena is also on the deed, she should have also signed it.
Lorena? Yes, property is owned by both, so we only have Derek's signature. Is that what you're pointing out?
Yes.
Yeah. Is, is, is Lorena present tonight? No? Okay. Well, that will be a signature we will need to get on the application. And the specific zoning request is, as previously stated, to move forward with a request for a PCD changed to PCD, which is planned commercial development for all five-point-one-three acres. Zoning Commission members, was the correct legal description furnished in text and map? And do they reinforce each other?
The map, the existing site plan, our requirement is to have a scale on it of at least one inch to two hundred feet. There had to be, has to be signed by a registered Ohio surveyor. The plan that we received does not have either of those things.
I, I agree with what you're saying. Is anybody else? We're all in agreement, I think.
I'm sorry.
With what Joni just said.
We were trying to, we had another discrepancy.
Okay, well, we were just, if you didn't hear what she said, she's pointing out that there is no surveyor seal on the
Yeah, this is, this is not an official.
It's not a, it's really not an official survey.
Correct. We do require one.
Yes, we do require one with the application. Because that's missing. Okay, another notation in terms of the item that's missing in terms of the required items for an application to be considered. All right. Ms. Ruba, have the adjacent adjoining contiguous property owners listed on the application been notified?
Yes, we had three returns. Two were sent to vacant properties and one was, they did not have a mail receptacle on site.
So there were only, what, four? Properties.
I was going to say, that's most of the people. Two of the properties that might have been vacant were maybe the Garbrand properties? I mean, in terms of the addresses that were returned.
Garbrand Hill and then ATL-R.
ATL-R LLC, it's another vacant lot.
And, and which, which of the Garbrands was the other one?
Right.
The two properties that are right across the street actually have apartment numbers listed on the, on the website.
There's three apartments in that building.
Could be why they got returned because we didn't specify. One, one is apartment C and one is apartment A.
And they're all at the same street number.
It's the same, same street number, but they have an apartment.
A, B, and C.
Right.
Yeah. I noticed that when I looked it up online.
That could be why they got returned. Yeah.
But the persons who live there may or may not be the property owner.
Correct.
I think that's why we got the ATL-R, LR, LLC owns the building or parts of the building.
They own the property.
Okay, so the effort was made to notify them in, at any event. Anybody have a question about the property owners being notified?
No, yes, I'm, I'm not happy that three out of five letters were returned as, as not being notifiable. I think we have a responsibility to actually notify people.
Now, legally, the responsibility has been met by sending out the letter. Beyond that, you know, making additional effort to communicate is certainly appropriate. I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
Okay.
But as far as a legal responsibility, it has been met by sending the letters to the addresses that are on file at the auditor's office. Are there any non-notified property owners present who are adjacent or contingent, contiguous or across from this property? No, there are not. Okay, members of the commission, any other possible errors in the application?
I'm not sure they'd be called, well, yeah, I have a lot of problems with what the, what this application consists of.
At this point, yeah, before we begin the detailed review of the development plan, yes, we're dealing with the other potential errors, but we will need to address the development plan itself as well. Okay, so we've pointed out the, the missing signature. And we've pointed out that we also need an appropriate the required drawings from a certified surveyor because what we have doesn't meet that requirement. Did I miss anything else that's been pointed out? Did I miss anything else that's been pointed out? Okay, so for the property owner, we need to make sure that those things would end up being, would end up being addressed because without that, the application would be denied. Now, we do have a development plan that was submitted and we will need to spend some time taking a look at that, so at this point, I would ask the the property owner to present an overview of what it is that you have in mind with this development plan for this property. Oh, Mr. Clay, so are you going to be representing them now? You'll be assisting.
I'm Joe Clay with Plan for Land. We met a few days ago. I understand that he has a question about whether this is the application and submit a kind of the context of which it would be submitted, so I'll be offering some advice in that. In the council with, if I understand, is either interested in probably tabling or withdrawing the application as submitted in the interest of paying something to you guys that would be more acceptable. I did recommend this had been publicly notified by the time that I, we met. And obviously, the interest of trying to collect public comment and collect your feedback very critical. I would like to go through and assist in putting together a development plan that makes sense for the property to satisfy the either the PCD requirements or whatever else might be sought, so. But we do understand that there's a non-conforming use and I'm not the expert on what had happened on this property in the past. But would like to maybe have a little overview of what he bought this property.
If there's an approved non-conforming use from someone, I mean, when you say, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Zoning being enacted and it's my understanding that it's been used in the past for a commercial purpose. So it's my understanding he purchased the property with the idea that he was purchasing a non-conform use. Now, the council with prior inspector, not your current zoning inspector, had some ideas that he had some ability to use the property and continue to use the property in a non-commercial sense, so. I'd like to better understand that. I'd like to collect as much public comment on that as well. What had happened on this property in the past and give us the opportunity to at least try to examine what, what the expectations are that might be able to be continued as non-conform use before seeking a rezon. If that makes sense. But to the extent of what's being presented to you tonight, I did not prepare it and I think he's under the understanding that he'd like to try to bring you the adequate package to consider if this is an item that needs to be considered in the future, but we'd like maybe some time to try to address that. He did believe that he was under enforcement action if he didn't submit something, so I understand some of this was not necessarily put together in distress, but it was put together with the idea he tried to, tried to get it in front of you guys in an adequate timeframe to make sure that he had an opportunity to review it.
It would have been helpful if you had gone ahead with some preliminary meetings with us.
We did talk about that. I know he paid a fee for what he's doing and I did talk to Mike earlier today. I don't know if a withdrawal with the idea that we could utilize that for some preliminary meetings, of which this could be one, would maybe be more appropriate and more appropriate to try to have dialogue about where we hit with this. I'm here to maybe more than anything else take notes, but my interest would be to try to work with you guys and with them to help facilitate a plan.
Well, the usual process with withdrawal, withdrawal would take place before we start the hearing.
Understood, and like I said, there was notice given and I understood people were probably going to attend whether or not we withdrew prior to this hearing, so. In that interest, I understand there's already been activity on site. If this was a proposal, I might have recommended, hey, let's withdraw and come back. But because there's a use that's already been pre-exit, been established on this property, like to understand what the concerns are around that use that's been there. Because I do understand enforcement notifications that he received were based on neighbors' complaints. So I'd like to understand what those are, if that makes sense.
Well, our zoning inspector is here this evening, Mr. Cannon. And I know that he responded to, as you've indicated, that there were concerns regarding the property. I don't know whether you found anything additional out regarding any kind of previous previously granted, any kind of non-conforming use that would have been grandfathered. I understand how the purchaser could have been advised that, but it wouldn't necessarily have been anything to do with zoning.
I wasn't aware of that non-conditional use permit thingies were.
Well, not, not non-conforming, but if they got a variance.
Does that run with the land permanently?
Yeah, that's up to the BZA. That's the reason I'm asking, I'm saying to Mike, if he's found anything in the records.
There's no, there's no official variance or anything going through the BZA on this property. I think what Joe's trying to say is that Garrett brand had some kind of business going in that building that he's using for his, I don't know, repair or whatever. And there, I guess that's, is that, is that the premise you're gonna go on, that?
Yeah.
I'm not trying to make an argument on it because I don't think this is, like Joni said, I don't believe this is the proper forum for that. What I'm understanding is similar to other buildings that are scattered throughout Harlem Township in the area. This did have a non-residential use on property in the past and it's created zoning. So it's my understanding, based on an historical timeline, that building's been there before any of the, definitely before he purchased the property, but before zoning went into effect on the property as well as my understanding.
That would have been prior to 1988. So, and I don't know.
And I thought the Garrett brands were using it for an agriculture-related business.
Like I said, I want to gather more info. I understood it was manufacturing and there's overhead doors and there's activities there. It was set up for much more than that. I don't understand the entire history. I'd like to better understand that. I don't think that's an argument that I want to make tonight, but I do want to explain that if we did request a tabling or a withdrawal, that might be the nature is maybe.
I think at this point, because we have accepted the application, that we need to go the route of tabling it, scheduling it, meaning we put it on the table to set a time and date in the future. At which time then we could move the process forward. Or it could be withdrawn, but that will mean forfeiting the, at this point, the base fee would not forfeit the, the other part of the fee, so. If you want to withdraw it, that's, that's an option. And then we can go in terms of approaching the trustees. We can't make the decision about fees. That's a decision that's made by the trustees, other than what I've just already stated.
We could set up a date for a real preliminary meeting.
Yes.
If that's the route.
Yes, and if the trustees would approve utilizing the fees that have been paid for that purpose, that will be a decision that we can request from them, but they would have to approve it because we don't set the fees. They do.
Yeah, no, I think tabling with the idea we have a preliminary being could be withdrawn at that time too. My understanding correct. We'd have maybe an opportunity for a couple of meetings. My only interest is to gather as much info tonight as possible. I've been taking notes as you had some incompletes to the application, but the dialogue regarding the development plan and the issues that the neighbors would like to see if this would be at all undertaken. Like to try to make this movie.
I would, since people came, I would like to hear what the public.
Yeah, they're here. I'm not, I'm assuming, we will find out, but I think Joni's making the point here that if these folks are here because of the hearing, and I'm assuming that's why they are, then we need to provide them an opportunity to either ask, ask questions and hopefully we might be able to give them some answers.
Yeah, and I think to that, like, we'll take notes and I'd love to respond. I mean, I have a formal response tonight. I have a formal response tonight, but I think our interest is to try to come back at the scheduled time and provide as much dialogue as possible.
Well.
Mike, why don't we, why don't we listen to the residents and then decide when to reschedule?
Yeah, we'll have to look at it, at our calendars for purposes.
Let's not do that right now.
No, let's listen to. Let's open that at this point, I'll open it up to public comment and or questions. So if members of the public, but we haven't given them any real specific information in terms of what it is, so I think we should do that first, Tom. And you can provide a quick summary of the, granted, what, I understand what you're saying, that this is something that has been happening in the past.
Sure.
But it doesn't mean because it happened in the past that it was legal.
Understood. Yeah, and that argument aside, I would like them to.
Question is to be set aside. What we're interested in knowing about, what is the operation that Mr. Neff wants to bring forward in a legal manner?
Sure, I'll give an overview.
Description of that, just for the public to have that background information.
Okay, I'm gonna provide an overview and obviously you have the application in front of you and I'm hoping that they've had an opportunity to review as well. I understand he does run a logistics business. It's trucking. He hauls primarily for a, you have a few different clients, correct? So he has agricultural, non-agricultural clients. He, he has expanded parking on this property with the idea that he could utilize the building for a shop to work on trucks and the opportunity to park vehicles on this property. As far as other improvements, there's been none at this time. There have been some mounds and things, attempted screening put in place. I understand that the interest of those was to try to minimize any complaints at the direction of prior zoning inspector Matt, so that if you could try to, try to make it out of sight, out of mind that it might fly, so. But that was, that was the idea of, I guess, what's been done. The idea would be that we want to try to see what can be done to maintain that business going forward. Any limitations that would be put on the business at this location, including the areas of the site that would be used? Any of that stuff we'd like to, like to better understand. But as it's been expanded right now, I believe there's been a site's plan submitted indicating parking at the rear of the site. The existing building, overhead docks, the overhead docks been put at ground level, so they're no longer overhead loading docks. They're now ground level docks where you could access them to get access to the building, not for semis, but for, for his, his use to try to get vehicles in and out, so. But he'd be primarily using the building for maintenance of those vehicles. And he's got, you know, some recreational use of the, private recreational use of the building, just golf simulator, stuff like that, but things that are commercial in nature. He does not reside on the property. He resides in New Albany, so his interest is to purchase this property for business use. Would like to understand what he can use the property for going forward. And that's part of why we would like to try to find out what we can put together from a site plan perspective that might make it more appealing.
And nobody besides your family uses the golf simulator.
The golf simulator?
Whatever, whatever.
Well, actually, my nephew mainly, but yeah.
Family.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a, it's just a put-together golf simulator, yeah. Yeah, it's not, people don't come in and use it or.
I pointed that out only in the idea that this building's not heavy industrial use building. He's literally looking at an opportunity to try to maintain some trucks there in a small section of the building.
You understand that we have had a recreational building become a big commercial operation that was only supposed to be family. So we are very much aware that this can happen and we don't want it to happen.
Sure. It, like I said, I would envision a planned commercial district if that's the path that we go, would have to have limitations on the use of the building as well, so understood.
All right. Anything else that you want to say at this point? Because I'll open it for public comment and or questions.
That's okay.
Members of the public, if you have a question or a comment, please feel free at this point regarding this application to, to change the zoning, but basically to continue the operation. It's what it would result in if a change in zoning were approved. It would continue to operate. What you would see if it were a planned commercial district would be a very, very specific plan that would identify exactly what's happening on the property, when it's happening, what the structures look like, any screening that might be required. It would all be identified in writing in the plan and that would then be enforced by the zoning inspector. So at this point, I'm just saying to you as members of the public, if you have a question, please come to the podium to ask it. Or if you have a comment, please come to the podium and share it. So we're open to the public and likewise online.
And if you could please state your name and address before your comment.
My name is Marcia Shaw. My address is 4550 Miller Paul Road. And my backyard is very visual to the property. And first of all, it's zone agricultural, correct?
Current zoning is agriculture, yes. AR1, which means it's a minimum five acre lot.
But it's been operating as commercial ever since he purchased a property with notification from the inspector that he was not allowed to use it commercially numerous times. I don't know if you have all that documentation, how many times he's been approached?
I don't have, we do not have the documentation regarding the specifics, but we know that, that from, from the zoning inspector that there was a citation issued.
Right, and then supposedly it's been turned over to Delaware County Prosecution?
Yes. That's handled through the zoning inspector's office.
Operating illegally.
And that's why they're in here trying to determine how to have the business operate legally. They were coming to zoning to seek a change in zoning so that it could operate legally. Currently, it's an illegal operation under AR1 zoning.
And I guess I don't understand the benefits of letting him operate when it's when he's been operating illegally. But anyway, the noise.
The process of shutting him down is one that goes through the courts. The zoning inspector has no authority other than to take the issue to the county prosecutor and then it's handled at that point.
Okay, and can I ask what that status is if it has been turned?
The county prosecutor recommended that they submit an application to zoning to get it changed.
And then if it doesn't get changed?
I beg your pardon?
If it does not get changed?
If it does not get changed, then they would either have to shut it down or they will be subject to potentially a fine of $100 a day for each day it operates after the notice has been provided.
For instance, if you pull up on Google Maps, the aerial vision, it shows 10, 10 dump trucks on property. And there's always dump trucks on property. And there's always a lot of activity in the back of the lot. There's backup beepers, there's truck beds dropping very late at night and so forth. And I know the application says from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Truck pulled in just this last week, 7:00 PM. The neighbor that lives at 45, 4405, which she's not here tonight, says he sees lights over there at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning. So he's outside of the parameters of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So like I said, just the drivers of some of the trucks, they've pulled out on Center Village Road in front of other traffic. The dump trucks itself, they've spilled rock in the middle of the, on Center Village before. I just don't feel like they're a good neighbor to the neighborhood. I feel like they have just tried to pull the wool over on neighbors, you know, with township's eyes. They've been operating illegally. And now that they feel like this is the only recourse, I don't know if it is the only recourse, but just a frustrated neighbor, I just don't feel like he's a good neighbor because he's basically, the inspector's obviously been there and said they're operating illegally and still he continues to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else?
My name's Hallie Becker. I live at 4500 Miller Paul Road. And our property backs up to the lot right where his back lot is. And there have been a big increase in the number of trucks over the years and we've lived there for 38 years. And I, the sound of the beeping, I mean, it goes on and on and the banging, like Marcia said, the noise is very loud. And the lights at night and the dirt mounds do nothing for the noise or the sounds of the banging and these backup beepers. But I have noticed a big increase in the trucks over the last three or four years. But I have noticed a big increase in the trucks over the last three or four years. Since I can see it direct, I can see it from my kitchen window, the back lot with these trucks in it. So.
So how many trucks would you say there are roughly?
I just count from my backyard. I probably could count at least just the mound is covering up part of the trucks nowadays. I have, my husband pointed that out, but you can still see the trucks. Um, I can't see them all. I haven't got, done the Google map thing, but at least six from my vantage point at any given time.
And we've heard the statement made that this is a, um, an operation where the, it had been there previous to the current owner. Uh, I'm not, I don't remember. I think he, uh, Mr. Neff, did you purchase this in twenty-one?
Twenty-one, yes.
Yeah. So prior to twenty twenty-one.
I never heard a peep. I just learned from my neighbor, was it a worm farm? That was there prior.
So it, but it was, it was an agriculture function?
I don't really know.
Because it wasn't something that was disturbing.
Oh, I never heard anything.
Okay.
Just to clarify, there's a family in the township named Worm, W U R M.
Yeah.
Was their farm or it was an earthworm?
Say earthworm farm. Yeah, no, I never, before the property, that's what made me even look up. I did go to the auditor's website when all these trucks started appearing a few years ago. And then I said, oh, this just sold. To, you know, I didn't even know of course.
So it used to be part of the Garrett brand farm?
That's my understanding. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Evening, everybody. Kevin Chaney, forty-five eighty Miller Paul Road. Uh, yeah, previous to these folks come moving in, um, Alan Garrett brand owned that property. Tried a worm farm. It didn't work out. Um, and then I think Alan has since passed away. Uh, when these folks moved in, there was a, just a large amount of gravel that was brought into that, uh, property. Uh, there's a lot of wetlands that were filled in by that gravel and by block top, uh, chipping that they, you know, when they grind up the roads, uh, that was brought in as well. Uh, the hills and mounds don't do anything for the noise and the dust. Uh, it's already been stated, you can hear the beeping of the trucks backing up. I think now there's an excavator in there now. Uh, it's moving around, moving gravel. Uh, the, the trucks start at five, five thirty in the morning. Uh, they'll, they'll start your engines up. They'll pull out with their beds up. Um, take off real fast and slam their brakes on to get that tailgate to slam, to get the rest of the product out of the tailgate. And then lower them down. You know, you get the big thud with that and then they take off. Uh, eight to twelve trucks at any given time on the property. Throughout the day, a lot of them will disappear, go do their jobs, whatever they're doing and then come back until six, seven, eight, nine o'clock at night. Uh, one took off one time with his bed up and ripped some of the electric wires down on Center Village Road, caused a power outage for a little while. So it's just been a, um, a mismatch of, of problems coming from over there. Um, like Mrs. Shaw said, just have not been very good neighbors. None of us have ever been in contact about what's, you know, uh, who they are. Uh, I understand they live in New Albany. Um, so maybe, maybe go up to sixty-two and look for a piece of property closer to your house and, you know, maybe start your, your, uh, company there. I don't know. Just my comments. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chaney, you mentioned that, um, there used to be a wetlands area that's now filled in. Did that affect the drainage on your property?
Not on mine personally. I'm, I'm about three houses away.
South of the property, I'm assuming.
Correct.
But you still hear all those noise that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That you're making reference.
You can hear it further down the road. People across from me on Miller Paul hear it. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else wanna make a comment?
I'm Dan Shaw and I live at forty-five fifty Miller Paul Road. Couple of things that I wanted to point out, um, since May thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. When the business started, when he purchased the property, I don't know what promises were made by the seller to the purchaser. As far as, you know, previous or whatever, but apparently didn't do his research as to what, what can be, what is allowed to be operated there. What I'm also gonna say is, you know, if it's been illegal, are we gonna change the laws to make it legal? Does that make sense for any of the laws or anything like that? From, you know, that standpoint, John, who talked earlier, he said it committed to a residential township. This is not, that's not a residential township. I can guarantee you the New Albany company are talking about annexation or anything like that. You let a commercial property in there, guess what? You just opened the floodgates. Okay. Another thing I bring up and I, we've talked about the noise, we've talked about the disruption. I go to work about four, five thirty in the morning. I can't tell many times in Harlem, I've met the trucks. Heard the trucks. I seen him come home at night, late at night. On the, on the application talks about, uh, using, um, agricultural trucks. I grew up on a farm. There's a lot of agriculture, but he can write, drive up that Miller Paul, all the rep, roads around here in harvest time. They're, they're, they're not agricultural trucks. They're dump trucks. Okay. Just trying to pull the wool over our eyes from that standpoint. The other thing I, I would talk to the zoning folks, everybody involved with zoning or whatever, um, you, you had a duty. And you neglected that duty to stop the business from doing that. You've had two and a half years that it's been operating, you know? So if this goes through and then New Albany comes in, are you personally gonna be held liable or responsible? From that standpoint, that's something you need to ask your question. I'm not saying that. I've asked an attorney that question and he said that is a possibility. So I'm just bringing that up. Any questions?
Hello, we don't have any questions.
Thank you.
We're providing you the opportunity to ask a question.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Online?
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm just asking if anyone was online.
Oh, I'm sorry. Online, any, uh, is there anyone that's online? Everyone's muted. So if you have a question, you will need to unmute yourself and identify, um, yourself by name. I can't read them from here, but I think most of them have names up on the screen. No one, uh, online has a question or a comment, apparently. All right. Um, members of the commission, anything further from you? Right then, um, because we scheduled this as a hearing, we, um, can go ahead and schedule a recess this. But we need to recess it to a date and time certain.
Yeah, I don't think this is a case where we should recess because we don't know a date time certain.
Well, we could.
We got all kinds of preliminary meetings to work with and.
What we could do is to give room for a preliminary he- or preliminary meetings, uh, is to recess it five or six months out. And simply say this is April, we'll recess it till August.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be next month. It doesn't have to be.
And then that gives.
But if he wants to use his fees for this, try to get, uh, ask the trustees to use the fees for this, for the preliminary meetings, we probably just need to have him withdraw it.
He, that, that's an option. Um, it's a very unusual set of circumstances that we're dealing with. We brought this up, uh, in terms before the, uh, application was accepted. Unfortunately, decided they wanted to go ahead and submit it as opposed to pulling it back and going the route of, um, preliminary meeting at that time. So, um,
I might offer.
Joni's suggestion here would be potentially to withdraw it.
Yeah.
Then.
I think out of respect.
To the, uh, zoning, or I'm sorry, to the trustees to utilize the base application fee toward scheduling, uh, preliminary meetings, which we could certainly do.
Yep. I, I, out of respect to those that are in attendance, I, I also think that would be a great idea because, um, the notice could be reissued with new application when and if filed. And it would also give us an opportunity for dialogue with neighbors in advance of those preliminary meetings and alongside those preliminary meetings. So, yeah, if, if, uh, that's okay with the board, we'd like to put in a request to withdraw, but also a request for a preliminary, uh, hearing date. And I'll work with Mike to understand if we can roll the fee, uh, to account for a preliminary hearing, uh, or preliminary meetings, uh, with, with you.
That request for the, with regard to the fee would need to be something approved by the trustees.
Okay. Yeah. And we can take that up separately. Um, is it something we could still schedule a preliminary and then submit appropriate? I know the fee's not outlandish.
Yeah, the fee, the fee for the preliminary meeting would not have to be paid tonight.
Okay. Yeah, we could take that up and make sure it's paid before the meeting date, whenever that is scheduled. But if you could schedule it.
Uh, doing it that way, then officially you're withdrawing.
Correct.
The application.
Yeah. And I'll let him acknowledge since I don't have power of attorney tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Neff, you're correct.
And his wife did not sign, so I'm hoping you don't need her acknowledgement.
Then we also would need, uh, confirmation from Lorraine. Is she, is she a co-owner of the property?
Yes, she is, but she didn't sign the application to actually apply. So I'm, I'm assuming that he's withdrawing that, that would satisfy hers as well.
Withdrawing it, he signed it. So we'll, we'll have a signature from him.
Okay.
With regard, did you, do we have the form that we can show that as a withdrawal?
Yep.
Right here. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and we'll fill that in as a withdrawal and we'll sign it off on it that way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, we will put in a request to the trustees with regard to your question about the fee to be paid for the preliminary meeting.
Perfect. And I, I assume since we have neighbors here, if we could schedule the preliminary meeting here, that would give them an opportunity to know when that would occur as well.
We'll look at doing that.
Okay, thank you.
But we have to all look at, let's, let's clear the air and then, because we're not doing that, we'll do that as part of a regular meeting.
Okay.
Schedule it, but we'll close this hearing and then we'll go to, back into session and we will schedule the preliminary meeting. All right. So the form, can we just fill then, uh, and we'll show it as withdrawn?
Thank you guys, and you need.
Yeah.
Sign the rest because the other one.
Yeah, withdrawal. Yes, that's cool. That's it. So we're, we're not voting on it. He's withdrawing it. Right. Okay. Based upon the withdrawal of application H D Z C, uh, twenty-five oh four, um, could have a motion to adjourn this hearing.
I make a motion to adjourn the hearing for H D Z C twenty-four, twenty-five oh four. Second.
All right, motioned of by Joni, seconded by Brittany to
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing on twenty-five oh four. Of, please, uh, make this a roll call.
Mike Kappler?
Hi.
Joni Manzen?
Hi.
Tom Need?
All right.
Brittany Hopper?
Hi.
And Louie Greenwell.
All right. Okay, the hearing is closed and now we'll go back into regular session and look at scheduling a preliminary meeting. We've got another request that's pending. Uh, it's not a formal, not formally made. I have it on the agenda. So we're looking at, uh, a second preliminary meeting possibly coming up. All right, folks, get out your calendars. We can't use, um, the meeting this month, obviously. I don't know if we wanna look, um, to scheduling an, uh, another meeting this month or how, how do you wanna do it? Suggestions?
April twenty-eighth? Maybe?
April twenty-eighth? Do that. That too soon?
If you want me to prepare a development plan, that might be too soon. If you wanna provide feedback on the existing applicationist.
It's not worth.
Okay. Um, I, I might recommend mid to late May if, if possible, just so I have time to prepare a development plan for that hearing, for that meeting.
I don't know if it's worth calling out as well that the wrong procedure was used. Right?
With.
Was, is, yeah, yeah. I don't think they used the new procedure.
Yeah.
Oh.
There, there's, have been new procedures put in place for B C Ds.
Right. No, it needs to be pointed out that.
Call that out.
So you'd be looking at articles fifteen and article twenty-three, I believe.
Yes.
If you will find, and you'll find it online, Joe. Cause there's references made to in the plan that was submitted, which are not correct references in terms of cite, citing the sections of the zoning resolution.
Okay.
And you would need to make sure that that, um, that, that, that would be addressed. And that's because the, the zoning section, article fifteen was revised. And now the procedures are identified as be, being article twenty-three.
Okay.
Instead of what used to be built right in for every planned district, not, not overlay districts, but for all straight planned districts. It's article twenty-three.
Okay.
For procedures.
Yeah. So in May, May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day. So your only option is May nineteenth or the workshop, May twelfth.
The nineteenth is the B Z A meeting?
Yeah, well, that won't do then.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be on a Monday.
Or another day of the week.
Yeah. Mondays I kinda do set aside for zonings. Other things, I'm not sure what I might have.
But we, um, we potentially could do, uh, looking at May twelfth, I guess. Yes. The last week of May. Um, I will not be available anytime that week.
I expect to not be available after that week anyway.
So you wanna try the twelfth?
We could schedule it for the twelfth and then.
Otherwise you gotta move into June.
We'll have to move, um, probably, you know, the wor- the workshop meeting with Scott, cause we won't. I know we're not gonna be finished with everything that we need to do.
We're working on signs now with Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna start on that.
It may not take our entire meeting, would it be? Would we have the entire meeting set aside just for the preliminary?
Yeah, there's a time limit that they're supposed to get for their being.
Up to two hours.
Well, that's pretty much a whole meeting. Yeah.
They could have the full two hours. Okay.
Just cause that's only five weeks out, is it possible to, to look at after Memorial Day? I, I hate to say, but.
Yeah, and into June.
Yeah.
Into June.
June gives us more opportunities.
Go into June.
Cause there's multiple Mondays. There's five.
There's five Mondays in June. We could probably fit it in here somewhere.
I got a few things to map. I wanna make sure I bring you up.
Yes.
Well, we went into June, um, yeah, we got, you're right. We do have five meetings, the twenty-third and the thirtieth.
You have two special meetings.
Don't go crazy, Tom. I like you guys, but pushing it.
Not them.
Not them. The, I'm good with the twenty-third or the thirtieth.
Yeah, either of those works for me.
Let's see.
Yeah.
Um, I may be in California then.
Both?
I'm going to a wedding.
Both dates?
Twenty-third and thirtieth?
The thirtieth I could do. Yeah, we won't be out there that long. The wedding will last that long.
How long will the mar- will the marriage last?
About the marriage, hope the marriage lasts longer. Yes. But the wedding won't.
Thirty?
Uh, so.
June thirtieth.
How about June thirtieth? We're going way out there, Joe.
Okay. That'll give us more than enough time to add it.
All right. June thirtieth. Preliminary meeting.
Seven thirty.
Uh, yes, we would schedule it for seven thirty. It would be from seven thirty to nine thirty. It's a maximum of two hours. That information, uh, if you would share it, you seem to be the only gentleman who remained with the rest of the folks who were here. Uh, we will, of course, publish the information in terms of our meeting, but Mr. Clay's has indicated he intends to make some contact with neighbors. Mr. Clay's has indicated he intends to make some contact with neighbors. And it won't be just the folks up on Center Village Road. Most of the people here tonight were here from Miller Paul Road.
Yeah, I've been in contact with your applicant across the road and one question I would have, this is relevant, specifically the application I was submitted, so. Uh, but as far as the comprehensive plan goes, there's recommendations for commercial use east of Miller Paul Road. No recommendations for commercial west of Miller Paul Road, but those recommendations that were east were limited to the frontage along the roadway. If you're inclined, is there a reason why just a certain distance off the road? Is there a reason why I've stopped at Miller Paul Road, the recommendations in the comprehensive plan as far as commercial?
That was a decision that was made by the Strategic Planning Committee.
Okay, not the zoning commission.
Not the zoning commission.
Okay.
Uh, we did approve the overlay district and we approved the. Quick Strategy Guide in terms of becoming part of the comprehensive plan. But we did not specifically develop it, but the rationale is in those documents.
Okay.
So you could find it in the Quick Strategy Guide is where you could find the rationale in terms of. Guidelines that were being set.
Yeah, I would go back as far as the comprehensive plan itself. Which was actually approved just months after you bought the property, but was in the works for two years before then. And Chapter fifteen, Recommendations and Implementation says. Uh, limit commercial development to areas that are designated to include commercial development. So that's kind of roundabout way of saying. That area of the township, which is subarea B, is really not designed, was really not envisioned for commercial development. We're looking at State Route thirty seven, the northeast quadrant, we're looking at portions of of six oh five. Uh, either in the north or the south quadrants of the township, really not Center Village Road. And that's, if you look at the comprehensive plan as it exists, if you look at the Quick Strategy Guide as it exists. Um, and then John Scott and Economic Development Team working on, they may change things, but that's not in front of us yet. Well, plus the overlay districts that we just approved along thirty seven and the Trenton Township or, you know, Trenton Road. Trenton Road. Um, there there's industrial, light industrial property up there that is is zoned specifically for what you want to do. It's it's already there.
Insofar, yeah, I think it's important to make sure that you look at that.
Technically, it's an overlay, so you have to pull it down, but it is available there.
But it's available, right. It it would be, it would, you you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't, there would be no zoning changes required.
If.
Because the. The parcel is bigger.
If the, yeah, if someone pulls that down, that is correct, but the minimum acreage for the overlay would be twenty five.
And you would need sewers.
Well, and I think a lot of the requirements around noise and lighting also, you know, and not. Affecting residential lots would also apply in that area though.
Yeah, and I understood there were complaints tonight, we'll definitely address those. The idea, I I don't want to justify, but I understand, he was, he thought he was told one thing and then told something different, so that's.
Potential confusion with regard to maybe what has happened and what was said from two sources, I guess, the. The property owner that sold, the original property owner, sold the property and then the previous zoning inspector.
Yeah, yeah, I I'm gonna learn about the the worm farm. I I want to learn about that, so, but we'll we'll learn more about prior uses.
If you would have kept it a worm farm, you probably wouldn't have.
Yeah, well, the worm qualifies as agriculture.
I do appreciate you guys' time.
One, one thing that that's that that that's on my mind is that. You're in close proximity to Highland Souders, the elementary school. Um, and that may over time develop into an elementary and middle school. Especially if there's residential development in the farm fields around where the school is now. Not the right use to have a heavy trucking company right down the road. That's my take. So you got to deal with that.
We appreciate that. We'll, anything's an option at this point, just need to figure out best path forward, so take all that.
Yeah, and I think the point, we're trying to point out in terms of what, where we are today. Is a lot different from where we were five years ago.
Yes.
Uh, and the documents that we have in place and the the expectations and the requirements we have in place are different. So keep that in mind, Joe, then, as you're looking at it as well. And Mr. Niff, I know you bought the property in twenty one, just as changes were being paid, but. The changes are here now and that that's what we are living by.
Okay, starting down the path, we're just trying to figure out how to, how to figure out how to finish that path in in the most positive way for everybody, so.
That's what we would like to see accomplished if we can get there, yes.
Appreciate the time that's looking to.
All right, well, thank you.
Derek, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Go figure.
Well, usually when we have a crowd, it has to do with the change in zoning.
Sometimes it shows up for that.
And sometimes nobody shows up for that too.
How far away was the notification supposed to go? Just adjacent and across?
Yeah.
Yes, it doesn't go.
I'm one property outside that.
We we kind of expect people to talk to their neighbors.
And I mean, I saw the sign, so I came down to find out what it was all about. It's.
Oh, the sign was up then, okay.
Well, that's good. I'm glad that the sign was there.
Yeah, it's exactly what I thought I was gonna hear.
And that's why we try to put the signs out, because in terms of notices, they are contiguous to, across from. Uh, basically, that becomes kind of the limitation and since.
I just asked the question because you were concerned about who got notices. I didn't get one. I've been in other jurisdictions where it's farther than that.
If this had been. If this was a zoning variance kind of thing, the BZA notifies everybody within two hundred to two hundred feet?
Two hundred feet beyond the property line.
Yeah.
So.
But ours is just.
Not just the contiguous and across from. All right, well, uh, the other business that we have on the agenda is People's Choice. Uh, request for modification of their approved plan commercial development is, uh, Mr. Fritz online? Okay.
I sure am.
Good. Uh, Christian, can you hear me?
I I sure can. Can you hear me?
Okay, very good. Um, and we do have the additional documentation that you provided, so everyone has a copy of that.
Great. So in in connection to our last meeting, um, there was a request for me to to turn over the occupancy permit. That we had been been waiting for from the building department. Based upon my conversations with them, they asked that we get a approval from the fire department. As well as, um, zoning approval for the portable toilet being zoning compliant. So, um, at this point. You know, I've submitted, uh, the documentation from the fire department. As well as communication that we've had with the building department, uh, requesting the minor modification. And so, um, you know, here we stand, trying to make sure that we get exactly what you guys need. But it's kind of chicken or the egg at this point, saying, hey, we want to get approval from zoning before we issue the. Um, the occupancy permit, so it's currently on a do not release status, but. Pending approval from zoning, uh, they would submit and approve the, um. The occupancy permit for the portable toilet.
Yes, we have that letter from. Sidhir Singal.
That's correct.
Also have the statement. Uh, it's. Copy of what's online, I guess. They're holding it, the status of the certificate of occupancy, do not release, and that's pending zoning.
That's correct, yep.
They need the certificate. Of approval from the zoning inspector.
That's correct, yeah, and it, my understanding would be, should zoning approve the minor modification? That would suffice for the building department to to go ahead and issue the occupancy certificate.
All right. And what we've got is, uh, in terms of the change in language, uh, that's suggested, there's two changes. One would be in Section two B, hours of operation. And you have a copy of that. It's typed now. Mr. Rubo created a new online form and. It will allow this information to be entered online in terms of a modification now. So we've got the hours of operation change, you should, you have seen that one before. And now it reads. Uh, in the new language would read, the storage facility will be open for business hours of seven AM to ten PM each day. During non-business hours, storage facility will not be accessible by existing or new tenants. The facility shall be operated by an onsite property manager from the hours of nine AM to six PM. Tuesday through Saturday. New rentals will be controlled through the property manager or via an onsite kiosk. Date time telephone number, website and or phone app. That's the proposed modified language. Anybody have any questions about that one? Christian, do you have anything that you need to add to that? I don't, I mean, we've discussed it before.
That's correct, yeah, no, no changes on my end, but that takes into consideration what we discussed last time as well.
And then the other item, um, is under four B, existing language. Sanitary sewers.
We'll go back to two B really quick. I, um. It's, I know it's been been a while since we've been talking about this. We're, did, have we already talked about changing the hours from nine PM to ten PM? Was that part of the original discussion? Someone just refreshed my memory.
The, uh. That's true, those hours are already in there.
So that, and and my understanding was on July sixth, twenty twenty two. That there had been a minor modification from the hours being seven AM to nine PM. That had been approved from seven AM to ten PM.
That rings a bell, but I was just looking at the. Does anybody have that?
Record of that.
I can't, I remember we changed it, but I don't remember what we changed it to.
I was forwarded a copy, just just for the record as well, that that does state that it is until ten PM. And I'd be happy to to send that over to you as well, based on what I have.
So we're saying that was already previously changed to ten PM?
I'm just, yeah, the only reason I'm questioning is because it says existing language, says seven AM to nine PM, which is.
It's the last language that I have in my confusing booklet.
I just want to make sure that.
Do you have that pulled up right now?
I I don't have anything.
Modification of operating hours was agree, uh, approved on seven eleven twenty two. No other changes were made.
But what did we change it to?
Seven to ten.
Okay.
But the existing language should note seven to ten, not seven to nine.
So they're really.
It's really not.
It is existing, it was seven to nine in the original.
Right, but what we're changing now is we're not really changing anything with the time now.
We're not really changing anything this time because, uh, the seven to ten was approved, seven eleven twenty two.
So the existing language needs to be updated to also reflect seven to ten.
Yeah, I'm, on my copy, I have it penciled in that it was changed.
Whatever you have, we don't have any in there like binder, so.
So the only substantive change that we're proposing is to have an onsite manager.
Yeah.
We're not changing any operating.
We're not changing the operating hours.
Okay.
They were approved July eleventh, twenty twenty two.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's a good catch, that the way that that's worded is not accurate.
It should say original language.
Proposed facility will be open from the business hour seven AM to nine to ten PM is existing language.
Which makes me wonder, do we, do we need to go back into the minutes or something and just confirm that or something? I don't know. Put it with the, put it with the plan that we have on file.
There's no record of that in the office? Is that what you said, Ashley?
I went off of what the one that we have in the office says, which is nine, but you just said that you have ten in yours.
And I remember, I remember the guy coming in and asking for that and we approved it, but I didn't remember.
I mean, that was like three secretaries ago, so. They haven't stayed, so.
Yeah.
Mike has it written down, which I'm saying maybe.
For my, I didn't write that one down.
Do we need to just go back to the minutes and just put like a copy?
And this was by the, by, not by Christian, of course, this was by Jim Garrick, who was the original owner of the property.
We usually keep everything together.
Well, the minutes would reflect that.
Yeah, if you could pull out the minutes for that.
What was the date on it again?
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven twenty two.
Okay, that'll be on the.
And we'll add them to our booklets here too.
Yeah. I can do that.
And then. Um, the original plan needs to be. To reflect that, if what, I mean, what's in the office needs to reflect that.
So put a copy of the minutes in that booklet too.
And then tonight.
Be replaced by something else.
While we're dealing with is modification. The storage facility. Will be open from business hour seven AM to ten PM during that all, that part remains the same. What changes is the facility shall be operated by an onsite manager. That's the new language that's being proposed.
Okay, got it, all right. Clear on two B, thank you.
Oh, no, you're, thank you for asking because, uh.
Yeah, I didn't have that information.
I'm glad I had my copy. I pulled it and brought it with me tonight. What happened in the, uh, well, I do know what happened. We didn't, we didn't have Ashley then.
Sorry, I was busy doing other things a few years ago.
No, not in your life, twenty twenty two.
Get us up to date, I promise.
All right, um.
And then modified four B, that looks.
Now we got to look at four B, correct. The other request. Will address the issue of the portable toilet in order to accommodate. Beyond having a property manager in the office for five days a week. So existing language sanitary sewer is not available on site and is not required as no restrooms or washrooms shall be provided within the project. Modified language, sanitary sewer is not available on site. How the new language been being, however, a portable toilet and hand washing station. Shall be provided in unit number twenty six and serviced on a weekly basis.
That is what we agreed to last time?
Yeah, we talked about it last time.
Yeah.
And that language then, Christian, that would be. Uh, satisfactory to you.
That is correct, yep.
All right.
That's based upon the the conversation we had during our last meeting in March.
So with that then, is there a motion with regard to approval of the modified language?
I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification of development. I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification of development plan for People's Choice Storage, Westerville Holdings LLC.
Okay, that was Tom.
That was Tom.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Joni and seconded by Tom for the modified language uh, to change to B to the proposed language and four B to the proposed language. Discussion.
I think we've gone over this a number of times.
We had.
And I think all the information that we asked for has been provided about the occupancy stuff and all that, it was very helpful.
Yeah, Christian, you've been very um, good at your fa- with your follow-up and getting the information to us in the timeframe that we requested, it's very much appreciated, thank you.
The feeling's mutual, thank you guys for uh, for being great at communicating as well.
Do we need a end of, a roll call vote on that?
Yes, we'll do a roll call vote. If there's no further discussion, Mr. Rubo, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mike Kavler.
Aye.
Jenny Manson.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Brittany Hopper.
Aye.
And Louis Green.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, so um, this will be reflected in our minutes and this modified language will show a date that a motion was approved of today, which is um, April seventh, twenty twenty-five for the modification in these two sections of two B and four B.
The mistakes affect immediately.
All right. Now.
Uh, just a question, does this have to go to the trustees, or because it's minor, it doesn't have to go to the trustees?
This one doesn't have to go to the trustees, because it's minor.
Then it does take effect immediately.
That's, yes, it's it's in effect with our approval.
Okay.
In this instance, it doesn't go to the trustees.
Okay.
For approval, that is.
Great, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We've been changing, where are you doing that, Joni? We just revised this.
This is done.
With a minor.
I don't think we.
No, twenty-three.
The the minor or modifications.
Under twenty-three, I hope we didn't.
Already.
So next.
What's next?
Well, one more thing, I'm sorry, there is one more thing, it's on the agenda.
Famers are having a party.
Oh, I was gonna say, there's not usually anybody here.
They're getting out of hand. The last item that uh, I wanted to um, review with you is we have a request that is probably, it's pending. Um, at least, my cannon indicated to me that um, we have a request coming forward from Scott Messer uh, for Mario. But I'm not sure if Joe Glaze is gonna get involved with that now or not, I heard a comment from him relating to that tonight. Um, for a second preliminary meeting for Scott Messer. Now, we scheduled um, the one for NEF, June thirtieth. So we could try to schedule the one for Scott Messer sooner than that, I guess. That's the only other item.
Has that request formally been?
I beg your pardon?
Has, has that request formally come into us to request a second meeting?
Yes, through Mike. I mean, we had the request for the preliminary meeting initially, but we only set one meeting date, and then we were waiting for him to let us know when they would be ready for the second one.
Yeah.
Do we have?
He said something like the second, and Mike said, it's like, what, a Thursday or Friday? I don't know, I just forwarded you the message he got from me, but you guys set a date.
Yeah.
And that's what he knows, that he goes, they'll set the date, and I go, yeah.
Do we have new information from him?
We haven't received anything yet, unless Mike has received it, he's just requesting that we set the meeting date.
It'd be nice if we, I mean, we could set the meeting date, but it'd be nice if we had that information before the meeting.
I don't disagree with that at all, yeah.
Okay.
So we, we can set the date.
Any information from him?
I beg your pardon?
Nothing new.
What?
No, no, no new information.
I'll try to get hold of Scott, see if he's got anything new for you.
Um, one of the things that we could do is go ahead and set the date and then um, have a deadline for submitting the information.
So.
Making, making our meet, our preliminary meeting date contingent upon receiving.
So Joe didn't want the twenty-eighth of April, which we all said was available.
That's because he didn't have time to.
Right.
To do the work for them.
But we could do Scott or Capucio on the twenty-eighth of April.
Yes, uh, I, I don't know that that Scott's got the same.
Well, if he's asking for the meeting, he must have the material ready, or he's.
Yeah.
Yeah, he must have at least something ready, because he was asking for the preliminary meeting. Or the uh.
End of the month?
Is it the preliminary meeting, or is it your seconded follow-up?
Well, it's the second one.
Preliminary.
They're, they're entitled to two.
Yes, so it's the second one, yes.
The first time around, we went through what we had.
Yeah.
And then he was going to redraft and submit, bring us something else to take a look at. So, what I would like to have, though, is for him to get this information to us, if we're gonna set for the twenty-eighth, then we need to have it uh, at least then by the uh, twenty-first. That sound okay, dude, everyone?
Yes.
Mike, can you communicate that to?
That's what I told Ash, so write that down, Ash, yeah, we'll get with them.
So we'll set the meeting date for the twenty-eighth at seven thirty and ex- and have him uh, submit the information to us by April the twenty-first. Into the workday. Okay? All right.
Twenty-one?
Yep.
Seven twenty-eight. You know.
But you want the information by the twenty-first.
We want the information by the twenty-first, the meeting will be on the twenty-eighth. And the meeting is contingent upon receiving the information. If we don't have the information, then we will postpone the meeting.
Whose property was that?
It's across the road from NEF, Capucia.
It's down the, down the road.
Yes, Marius.
Yeah.
And you were out my house today, talking to my wife.
Oh, is that okay, Larry?
Yeah.
That makes sense, yes, I was gonna say.
He wants to talk to you.
That, that house is um, just like, because Joe brought that house, his house up on the NEF situation, trying to say that his house was a business and a residential. It's just, it's just a horse barn.
Yes.
And which is what I thought it was, because like I said, my wife used to board there years ago, but I went by and talked to his wife earlier today, just to make sure that that is the case there. Just so more information for you, but.
Okay. All right, so we're all set for the twenty-eighth at seven thirty and receiving the information by the twenty-first.
And the public is welcome to attend preliminary meetings.
I may not be in town.
Yeah, they're, they're just, they're discussion meetings, no decisions are made. But we still need to advertise our meeting.
Yep.
And it doesn't mean it, uh, I mean, it has, you have to.
You advertise in the paper, we don't do property notifications.
There's no notifications, no.
Now, I will announce, I want to announce this, I'll probably announce this in all of our meetings, um, there was a new standard for um.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Did it go into effect?
Yep, bill three fifteen went into effect at the beginning of April. So the public notices will no longer go into the paper. Um, we are now allowed to use our website, Facebook page, um, the sign out front, so as long as you have a social media presence, essentially, you can post there. We still have to follow the standards of ten days before meetings, if it's a special or emergency meeting, twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Um, it's still all the same standards, just they're taking away the newspaper part of it. Um, the trouble with the newspaper is, a lot of newspapers are shutting down and closing, um.
That's because they're losing all their business by people not putting stuff in the.
Yeah. So a lot of.
Public notices being part of, yeah.
So a lot of places can't um, get notices into papers um, throughout Ohio, so there are townships that are saying, hey, I can't put a public notice out legally, because I don't have a paper, what am I supposed to do? So bill three fifteen didn't change that for us, um, so everything will be posted on our website, Facebook page, I'll still be putting it on the sign up front. And then outside our back door here at the township hall, we um, always have them posted outside there at Paper Forum Hall, so.
And that is in effect now.
Ah.
That is in effect now.
Yep, so both of these preliminary meetings, neither one will go into the paper, they will be on our social media.
All right, so when we read the public notice, it won't be from the newspaper, it'll just be the public notice that was posted on our website. Got it, thank you. All right, well, that concludes the agenda of what I have on it, anything else from anyone? Public comments?
I've enjoyed myself.
Oh, good, I'm glad you did.
Don't hear that very often.
No one ever.
I can't, once you said that.
Yeah.
By the way, if you, if you enjoyed it enough.
Yeah.
There you go, we have an opening for.
We have an offer.
An additional.
Tell him, Mike, he's won today.
Yeah.
Come on down.
Come on down.
So you.
So I will be out of town at the International Code Council National Code Hearings in Florida, trying to establish model codes for the, you know, United States.
No.
Building code.
Building code.
Well, you could help us out a lot, then. All right, motion to adjourn unless there's more business.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Brittany, seconded by Louis. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned. And we're early tonight.
This is the stuff I do all day, work for the board of building standards.
Oh, okay, well, you can ask yours first.